How's everybody doing this afternoon?
Very good.
That's good, that's good. Well, we're ready to begin our board's business. And of course, I'd like to welcome people in the audience to our meeting. With that, it is now 6:00 PM. I call this meeting the Laffery Independent School District to order. If the records show that a form of board members are present, that this meeting has been duly called and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meeting Act. Texas Attorney Code Chapter 5, my wife.
Feel pleased by your heads. Loving God, as we come to the end of this academic year, we look back with joy on all the accomplishments that we have achieved. We look back and acknowledge losses that have come upon our school district or in our community, and we remember all these beautiful people. We look back with some relief on all the challenges that we have had to undertake. We look upon the faces of our students whom we have taught, supported, and guided throughout the semester. We look upon the faces of our colleagues whose work has brought so much joy and depth into our own. We look upon the faces of our retirees whose legacies will be remembered. We look upon your face, O Lord, and see your loving countenance looking back upon us. In celebration of this past year, we thank you for our students, colleagues, and all those who contribute and support the important work of Laffery I S D. May all this bear fruit to make the world a better place. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Your head's over public comment. The first information item is the South Texas Health Co-op update.
I do want to introduce Mr. Alex Zuriya and the staff. As for, there are our health insurance consultants. We've had this health insurance along with Riondo for the, you know, it's been for over twenty-something years that we've been part of this co-op. Back when it got started, back in the late nineties, there was like five school districts that were in this health insurance co-op. Now there's only two, Riondo and Laffery. Alex is going to go over the co-op, the plan, the financials over the past twelve months. So we'll hand over to him.
Members of the board, thank you so much for allowing me to come today before you present our program, your program, to you. My name is Alex Zuriya. I've been licensed since 1996. I've been in the business for twenty-eight years. I got my consultant license in 2017. And I've had the honor and the privilege to serve your health plans since 2017. My predecessors used to be Russelberg and Jim Blackburn, who were the ones that put this program together back in 1998. And they brought me on board in 2017. I've known them since 1996, actually, when I first got licensed. Was going to come on board with them back in 1999 for a little bit. But I kind of went off on my own, but we still stayed in contact, kept a relationship, learned a lot from Mr. Russelberg and Mr. Blackburn. And when the time came, they gave me a call by the grace of God and asked me if I would like to partner up with them and be with them. And then, because, you know, they're up there in age, they're in their mid-seventies now. And so they gave an opportunity to continue this program with you. And the reason they brought me on board is because I believed in the program that you all have now. And they knew that I believed in it because there's a lot of plans out there, a lot of large school districts out there that have the household names, the Blue Cross Blue Shields and the United Healthcare's. But ask them what they're paying for their healthcare costs, and it's astronomical what they're paying. So with that said, let me just go through this PowerPoint presentation real quick for you and kind of give you an idea of where we're at. Okay, so I'm going to talk a little bit about, well, Mr. Carvassos was nice enough to kind of introduce the South Texas Health Co-op, but I'll go right through that. I want to talk to you real briefly about what your current program is compared to a PPO contract, right? You hear a lot of PPO, and then I'll go through the financials. Disregard the alternate plan, I can kind of talk on it a little bit later. So like Mr. Carvassos said, this program was established in 1998. Five school districts joined the program. Because in the old days, it was the law of large numbers, you know? The more people you had, the better rate you could command. That's the way it was before. PPO plans, PPO networks didn't exist in the 1980s. So when the PPO plans came into play, actually, the HMOs were the first ones to start a managed care program, and the PPOs came afterwards. And the idea of the HMO was to create a program that would enforce the employee to pick a primary care doctor and let that doctor manage the care of that member. That's the way it was. So lower rates because they were going to try to control the health habits of each patient. So the Texas Plans, Blue Cross Blue Shields, because this started in California, wanted to do something a little bit different, so they created the PPO Plan. So HMO stands for Health Maintenance Organization. PPO stands for Preferred Provider Organization. So the network, the insurance company said, why don't we create a program? Let's do contracts with doctors and hospitals. And then we can offer this to our clients, and then the clients, we can tell them, you're doctors in the network. And so for many, many years, whenever someone bought health insurance, whether it was an employer or an individual person, the question was, is my doctor on the plan? That was always a question. We were trained that way. Even I, as an agent, was trained to try to sell the plan that had the most doctors on the plan. In fact, I started in an HMO plan. So I kind of went against the grain in 1996, '97 because HMO was unheard of in the Rio Grande Valley. So I started in the HMO business, then it just kind of fizzled out. When the Affordable Care Act came into play, all of a sudden, the HMOs were revived. And so since 2014 to today, there isn't a single insurance company out there that sells PPO plans for the individual market. It disappeared. Why? Because the Affordable Care Act forced insurance companies to cover all pre-existing conditions. And so the insurance companies realized, oh, oh, we're going to pick up a lot of unhealthy people. So they eventually got rid of the PPOs. They only exist on the employer plans. And so because of that, a lot of small employer groups, you know, I have a lot of clients in the small group market. Two percent of our clientele has PPO. Everybody who has has an HMO plan, much more restricted. So what was trying to come into the valley in the late 1990s is now very prevalent today because they were forced to do that. So let me tell you the difference real quickly about reference-based pricing and PPO. My predecessors in 2009 realized that the law of large numbers wasn't really the case. It was how we pay for healthcare and what we pay for healthcare. Employer plans and agents as myself, we were forced to believe that a PPO plan was going to get me a better deal when I went to the hospital. So I'm going to get you, we've got such and such hospital, we've got such and such providers. So we're going to get you better deals. We have fifty percent discounts, fifty-five percent discounts. Some insurance companies say they have sixty-six percent discounts. My predecessors realized that the program was not going to be able to last this long if they did make a change. And that's when the reference-based pricing was introduced to the program. PPO plans charge an astronomical amount of money. Let me rephrase that. When you have a member that goes into a facility, there's a $130,000 bill that gets billed to the insurance company, right? Insurance company, because they're a provider hospital, well, you're going to give us a sixty percent discount. So from $135,000, it comes down to sixty-three percent. And so you still end up paying a very large amount of money. Whereas reference-based pricing starts from the bottom and pays upward. So let me give you an analogy. When you go to the car dealership to buy a brand-new car, there's a sticker in the window, right? And you see that sticker, and the car costs $62,000, right? You know, as a client, that you're not going to pay $62,000 for that car. You're going to go in there, you're going to twist the salesman's arm and make him come down to the price, and then you end up buying the car for $58,000 or $55,000, right? That's the way healthcare has become. Large gross bill charge, and then we get you a discount, and then this is what you have to pay. So when you see a presentation from a self-insured health plan from an employer such as Edinburgh I S D that has 4,500 employees, all you see is, this is what you paid, God bless you. This is what you paid in funding, and this is what you paid for medical expenses. They don't tell you, you know, I mean, what should we have paid? No, no, we have a discount. This is, you know, all of your employees, most of them, ninety-nine percent of your employees went into the network, and this is what you have to pay for. And so when we were hired by Edinburgh I S D in 2016, we were there for two years, they had a $23 million spend at that time. After two years, their spend went down to nineteen million. So with one hand tied behind our back, we were still able to save them some money. They didn't renew our contract, and here we are seven years later, right? About seven years. They went from a $19 million spend to over $50 million today. So is it because their employees are much more unhealthier? No. It's because the cost of gross bill charges keeps going up, right? And then the discount. And so because of your dealership, because you have allowed for your staff, your superintendent, and your CFO to continue on with this kind of program, your rates have remained static throughout the entire twenty-plus years that this program has been in existence. Has it been 100% perfect? No. But it has worked. And what that has done, it has allowed for your employees to not only have 100% coverage paid for by the district, but it also allowed for a very low cost, relatively no increase for over ten years in the independent rates. This is what you have here. And so at the same time, your plan very slowly continues to improve. Now, reference-based pricing, it's been around for a long time. All of your workers' compensation carriers, most of them, if not all of them, they pay Medicare up, okay? Medicare is the largest payer of the land. And so every hospital, every facility has to send cost charges to the federal government of what every single item that they charge costs. Then Medicare reviews it and puts their price of what they're going to pay the following year. They've got to do that every year. So our program pays on average 120% of Medicare. So we pay 100% plus 20% above. In recent, when the plan renewed in 2023, we had already installed a cash pay program, but it took a while for it to take off. And so this year, we have been able to, about half a million dollars of your claims have been paid for by cash. This is concierge service. So an employee calls the concierge, hey, I'm going to have a surgery at such and such place. This is my doctor. And then they negotiate that price. They call the employee back and say, hey, we've got to do settle at your hospital. Then they send us a request. We review it, we send it to administration for approval and payment. And so that has, our overall expense has been, on average, 127% of Medicare. So that's what a reference-based pricing. Number two, real quickly, we have been able to build a network for the South Texas Health Co-op that belongs to you. A lot of companies, they pay to have access to a PPO network. Edinburgh I S D was paying $7.15 per employee per month to access a PPO network that we advised them to do away with, and they didn't do away with it. Your network is yours. Nobody, it belongs to Laffery I S D and Riondo I S D. We have over 1,500 providers contracted. There are direct agreements between the cooperative and that particular provider. One-page document, a hundred and some odd words that sum that one page in. So this network belongs to you. PPO contracts, if you go to Blue Cross Blue Shield or anybody that owns a PPO network, and you ask them, can I see the contract that you have with McAllen Medical Center for Valley Baptist? They won't show it to you, you know? It's proprietary information. We can't share it because we have a contract with the hospital. They don't want to share it. You go to the hospital, and you please show us the contract you have with ABC Insurance Company. We can't because they don't allow us to show that contract. It's your plan. It's your funds. It's taxpayer dollars that are paying for medical expenses. You should know what you're paying for. And so your plan has not had to do that, and that's why it has worked so well. Medicare costs plus, okay? So whatever Medicare would normally pay. My mother was in the hospital for COVID-21. She was there two months. When she came out, Medicare paid the hospital $35,000. That was two weeks of intubation and ICU, and then the rest was rehabilitation and inpatient care. On a commercial plan, it would have been over half a million dollars. It would have been a million dollars, something like that. So they receive, our senior citizens, with their open arms and their own balance building, but the commercial plans, no, no, you need to pay us more. You need more money. And so that's been the fight that we've had. But reference-based pricing has gained a lot of momentum in these last few years. And so the hospital facilities have embraced it, okay? The PPO contracts, they have audit restrictions, outline provisions. They have escalator clauses, which means that next year, hey, we need to renegotiate. Have you ever seen, they usually put in the paper, or even if they'll send a notice, hey, we're renegotiating the contract with such and such hospital. We may not have them next year because they have to renegotiate this contract every year. You don't have to do that with your plan right now, okay? So PPO has discounts over gross bill charges. Reference-based pricing pays from the bottom up, okay? That's why your plan has been able to remain static with an average of 120%, 70% of Medicare. This slide right here, this is medical claims for the South Texas Co-op since 2009. And if you see 2009, 2010, over the last two years that the program was on a PPO network, okay? Since 2011 to today, we are on reference-based pricing, okay? And as you can see, the blue line is how your plan has worked. It has remained pretty static between the two lines, parallel lines, between $200 and $400, right? Year-to-date, this year, it's averaging at $193 per employee per month. This is just street medical claims. The red line is the medical trend at about 9.7, almost 10% trend every year that costs go up. When insurance companies or actuaries put a rate in place, they take medical trend as one point, price point, and then they take demographic, the age average of the group, and then the region where the group is at, and they come up with this rate. So our rates would probably have been somewhere in this area right here, okay? Because they have to make some money, and they have to make profit too in order for the plan to stay sustainable, okay? Any questions on this per employee per month?
I'm sorry, sir. I missed it. You said the 193, what is that?
This 193 is the average that the plan has paid per medical claim per employee per month, seven months into this plan year, from October 23 through April of '24, okay? We think that it'll land somewhere in the 200 range by the end of the plan year. But it's still, what I want you to pay close attention to is how that line has remained pretty level as opposed to this. You go to other school districts, Brownsville I S D, they're paying over $700 plus per month for their employees. They have over 8,000 employees, okay? You would think that they'd get a better price because they have a lot of employees, and that's not the case. So you can ask your neighbors in Harbinger, you can ask your neighbors in Mercedes, you can ask your neighbors in West Lico, and they're paying a lot more than what you're paying per employee per month. Now I'm just going to go real briefly over the, this is 24 months of claims, okay? And funding. So it's a rolling 12 months, May of '23 through April '24, compared to the previous rolling 12 months, May '22 to '23. And so as you can see, funding is relatively the same because your enrollment has been relatively the same. Independent enrollment went down just a tad bit, but other than that, enrollment has remained pretty steady. Your medical claims in these first 12 months was $2 million, $2.2 million. So let me just back up here real quick. So remember that your total funding is $3.7 million. So on average, the districts have funded $3.8 to $4 million in the last four, five years, okay? Depending on your enrollment, okay? So medical claims is $2.2 million, and your RX is $889,000. We have a very broad and very open prescription drug program. It covers pretty much anything and everything that's out there. There are some restrictions that recently came into play with injections for diabetic because a lot of non-diabetic folks are using it for weight loss, okay? And so, but it's very, very open. So if it's a medical necessity and it's a medical diagnosis, that particular drug is covered. So we have drugs that we're paying, we've paid up to $45,000 for one medication. I think that we should clamp that, and there's ways of doing that to, again, stay strategic, at the same time, still offer affordability. But that's something that has a little bit of room of improvement. At the very bottom, as you can see, there's rebates. These numbers that I'm showing you do not include any rebates in the overall totals. So last year, in this 12-month period, we received back $341,000 in rebate money that I've given to Mr. Carvassos to deposit into the account, okay? So from the $889,000 that was spent during these 12 months, $341,000 came back to us. It's a pass-through contract, so any rebates that the prescription benefit manager gets goes directly to the client, goes directly to you.
And I'm going to interrupt real quick, just so that you know. Because it's us and Riondo, the superintendent, Riondo is the chair of the executive committee, which is me and him, and Mr. Carvassos is the financial.
So we had all the bookkeeping for the co-op. All the receipts that come into, you know, the rebates come into our office. We deposit them in a separate account for the co-op. Riondo, they put in the premiums into that account, so do Laffery. And then, you know, we can sell that at the end of the month. At the end of the year, we present it to the board. Part of the financial statements, we present, audit the financial statement.
So when he says he gives it to Mr. Carvassos, it's both of our plan, but we take care of the finance part, okay?
Yeah, and thank you for clarifying that, Ms. Carvassos. Yes, Laffery is a fiscal agent of the plan, and Riondo is the legal agent. They're the ones that sign all the documents, the contracts and all that. And Laffery keeps track of every nickel that comes in and every nickel that goes out. They keep track of all, you all keep track of that. So we've had a little bit, you know, in the last 12 months, we've had a pretty, you know, the claims have dropped by half a million dollars. If you add the $341,000, that's another $300,000 that's added to our fund balance, right? Our fund balance has remained pretty steady throughout the years. 1.2, 1.4 million, sometimes it goes, it goes all the way up to about 1.8. It just depends. These numbers also, I'm sorry, the 1.2 million also, the districts fund the pool in different times of the month. So there are sometimes the deposit for a certain given month may not come in until the following month, okay? But they do come in, they're very insistent. And it's unheard because Texas Health School Benefit Program is another program that started three years ago. And there was a gold rush. A lot of districts were given, they were allowed to leave TRS active care, right? And so this other program tried to reinvent the wheel, tried to do something that the cooperative has been doing since 1998. Well, they've gone back to the districts and have done a cash call, a $150 cash call per employee per month. So imagine if you were in that cooperative that's still on a PPO contract, and they came to you and said, Mr. Carvassos, you have over 500 employees. We need 150 times 500 employees because we have a shortfall. And you're like, what? Yeah, it's in the contract. So a lot of school districts are now trying to get out of that one because that's just another, I'll share some information that you can look up on that, but that's just another reason why we know that PPO networks do not work, okay?
We have stop-loss coverage, right?
Yes. Yes, so the program has a $300,000 deductible, okay? We've only gotten two reimbursements, and that was in, I believe, in '18 and 2019, that we got some money back for stop-loss reimbursements, okay? And so what that means is if you have an employee that reaches $300,000, from $300,000 above, we start getting reimbursed from a reinsurance carrier anything over that expense, okay? Right now, we have one member that is at about $243,000, okay? On the plan, just FYI, okay? The plan has, realistically, you know, you don't need the stop-loss insurance coverage based on how you run. Because had we not had stop-loss insurance, I don't recommend to take it off because we want that protection. But had we not had it, you know, those two very small reimbursements, the plan, the reserves would have been able to cover it, okay? One more thing, the reserves that you currently have now is enough money. Today, you told me, we want to kill it. We don't want to do this anymore. The reserves stay where they're at to pay off runoff claims, okay? So you have enough money, both districts have enough money to pay off any terminal liability that may come into play after the fact, okay? So we have a healthy fund balance. We haven't raised rates for the staff in over 10 years. You made a very small bump in 2019. I think it was about a 2.5% of the employee-only portion. And Riondo did something of the same effect in 2018 and 2019, okay? But other than that, no increases have occurred. Because we always recommend that you increase your funding at least by 10% just in case, okay? It's what our recommendation is. In, I believe in 2018 or 2019, we brought in an actuarial company to do an actuarial study, and they also determined that our fund balance was good, and that they also have recommended that you do a 10% increase. Okay, so 17% down, current 12 months versus the last 12 months. This is a real neat category that I always like to show. It's plan amounts paid by service category, okay? So the light blue line is this year, this plan year. The dark blue line is the last plan year, and the brown one is benchmark. That's commercial plans nationwide. So as you can see, on the pharmacy side, the plan stays, is well under what the national commercial plans are doing and doing better than the last 12 months. And inpatient, the same, outpatient, the same, and office visits, the same. So that just tells you how the plan is performing by category, which is really, really good. On our prescription drugs, this is always very, very common. 85% of the drugs that are being dispensed are generic. 15%, which is the dark line, is main brand. But the cost, 89% of the cost is going to that 15% of the medications that are being prescribed. And 11% of the prescriptions that's being spent is going on the 85% of the generic drugs that are being prescribed. Just kind of give you an idea that specialty care medications are becoming very, very expensive. And there's ways to curb that expense as well. This is, there are five, six members that are accounting for about 30% of our medical spending, okay? As you can see there, so those are, the two of them are no longer in the districts. no longer, uh, in, in, in the districts, uh, the rest are, are still. And so, the plan has paid nine hundred and twenty-two thousand on, on, so, from the, we back up here real quick, from this total, right there, two million, two hundred and ten thousand, uh, nine hundred and twenty-two thousand has gone, uh, to pay expenses on, on six members. These are the top seven paid providers. So, when you hear, sometimes you hear, "Hey, uh, you know, there's Valley Baptist doesn't wanna take our plan." Uh, they do take our plan, uh, they're, they're one of the top seven providers there. Sometimes they'll try to verify benefits and the person that's looking at the ID card doesn't see the PPO network name on it, so they tell the member, "Hey, we'll take your plan," and that's not true. As a matter of fact, uh, Valley Baptist has jumped on the bandwagon now to receive cash payments from the plan. They love it, they always wanna get paid cash. We, uh, the plan pays on the day of service, and the beauty of that also is it's a zero out-of-pocket to the member, no out-of-pocket expenses for your employees or your dependents. MD Anderson is the number one, we paid them in the last twelve months over six hundred and six thousand. This is MD Anderson in Houston. Uh, they are the only ones, it's a, it's a state-owned hospital, they're the only ones that will not budge, and they, we only get a fifteen percent discount on all, off of their gross bill charges. So, so, we get it, we understand. Somebody gets diagnosed with cancer, I mean, it's very, very traumatizing, the last thing we wanna tell them is, "You can't go to MD Anderson," right? If they wanna go there. So, uh, even, they're, they're the only ones that we pay a very astronomical amount of money, uh, and, and, uh, it's relatively probably close to a thousand, not over a thousand percent of Medicare, because we only get a fifteen percent discount, okay? Now, MD Anderson, UT MD Anderson Cancer Center in San Antonio will give us a, a, a very good price, and even a cash price. Uh, so, we, we don't understand why, if they're both owned by the state of Texas, right? Why one will not budge. Uh, there is no empirical data that says that they have better outcomes than the one in San Antonio, okay? They just, they just have done a very good marketing camp, have a very good marketing campaign, and so, everybody wants to go to Houston. But we can get the same service, uh, over in San Antonio, uh, so, that's something that I've also encouraged that we need to think about. That could save us, uh, quite a bit of money there, right? Doesn't mean that, if, if you don't wanna do it, uh, if you wanna still use it, that's fine, I'm just saying, uh, I recommend that we try to steer, uh, not the current ones, right? Because if they're already getting treatment, we don't wanna disrupt that, but any future might wanna think about steering them over to the MD Anderson in San Antonio, we could probably get about a two, a hundred percent of Medicare, okay? It's a lot better, and even cash pay. Doctors Hospital Number Two, South Texas Health System, Valley Baptist, Eden Harbison Medical Center, uh, they're in that top seven. Total plan expenses, uh, were down about twelve percent. I'm sorry, these are, these are, yeah, fixed costs is up nineteen percent. And the reason that our fixed costs ha- have a slight jump this year is because in, in previous years, uh, w- we have a repricing company, so, let me just real quick it back up. Whenever a claim is filed to the third-party administration, which is Marpay Health, Marpay has to send that claim to somebody to get it repriced. Same thing happens with the PPO networks. PPO networks, they have to get it repriced and it comes back. So, we were using American Medical Pricing Solutions, which is Amts, that was repricing all the claims at the time. They were charging the plan sixty and a half percent of the loud, so every time they repriced a, a facility claim in, in a form of a claim, uh, we had to pay Amts sixteen point five percent. So, on average, we were paying them over two hundred thousand and change every year for them to just reprice and do some, do some, uh, balance bill negotiations, um, and we had it for many, many years. But since, since Asserta, uh, got into the repricing mechanism, we just thought that they're already doing our cash payments, it would go, it would go well, uh, bolted together, and they gave us a per-employee-per-month fee. So, we're paying Asserta on the front end, uh, no, no strings attached, we know what we're paying them, and it's not tied to a claim amount or a percentage of a claim amount. So, we're, we, uh, we brought that cost down from like two hundred some thousand all the way down to a hundred and twenty thousand, because we know what we're gonna pay Asserta, uh, year in and year out for that repricing mechanism, which is why you see this. Other than that, the fixed costs usually remain very, very steady, okay? But even with this small jump here, we're still, uh, running at twelve percent, uh, o- over last year below. This is your, uh, per employee-per-month cost, so the, the plan is running phenomenally well at two hundred and twenty-nine dollars for the last twelve months, ninety-two dollars, under a hundred dollars for the prescription drugs, it's very, very strong. And so, the overall cost per, per, per month is three hundred and eighty-seven dollars. That's when you're factoring, aggregating, all claims and fixed costs that go out, and we divide it by the number of employees that are covered under the plan. It's also down twelve percent. I like to show this one, this just kind of shows you what, how, how the trend is, has gone in the last, in, in three, uh, complete twelve months, from five, five hundred and thirteen dollars, four thirty-six to three eighty-seven, pretty strong. Uh, a, a, a little bit of that has to do with, with paying providers more and more and more with cash-based and avoiding that, uh, that, uh, balance bill. So, the employees don't get a balance bill after, it's zero cost to them. Win-win, by the way, because when, when the facility gets paid, they don't have to file a claim, so they've saved time for filing a claim. The employee or the member does not have to come up with the deductible or twenty percent, and, uh, the plan pays on average a hundred and twenty-seven percent of Medicare, which is, which is really, really phenomenal. Funding versus expenses, uh, you know, we ran, what's going in is going out, okay? Then, it's running at ninety-eight percent paid this, uh, these last twelve months compared to a hundred and nine percent. Remember that we get some rebates every year, so that helps offset that nine percent, uh, that, that we may have underfunded the previous year. We always encourage that we do increase our funding a little bit, just to make sure that we don't deplete the program. But it's worked well, uh, since I've been here, since two thousand and seventeen, we haven't had a week, uh, we haven't had a scare of a low fund balance, okay? And then, these are your, this is just six months, same thing as what I did, but I'm now comparing apples to apples between these seven months and last year's seven months. There's your funding, pretty much the same, enrollment at the bottom, uh, pretty, pretty much the same. Uh, we're, we're actually running better medical-wise. It's running at, uh, three hundred and fifty-five thousand less than what we paid last year's first seven months, so it's running, uh, twenty-two percent less. Uh, our fixed cost here shows higher, again, it's because of the Asserta. Now, now, we're, 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 Asserta, they started repricing our claims this October, so it's full Asserta, uh, it's about, there's about seventy, uh, thousand that's included in this fixed cost right here that we didn't have here, because we were paying it on the claim side with, with, uh, with American Medical Pricing Solution. And there's our per-employee, we're running at three hundred and fifty-six, so from three eighty-seven, it's running a little bit better. And then, here's also the, the, the average of total, uh, average cost, uh, seven months comparing, uh, three, three years, seven months, first seven months. Uh, again, the plan, it, it's running at ninety percent, so there's some, there's some, there's some, uh, breathing room with, with what we're, uh, funding and what we paid in expenses these first seven months. The last year is running right at, at, at what's going in and going out, okay? Uh, this here is how the plan has performed in the three categories. As you can see, uh, the fixed cost is relatively the same, with the exception of assertive cost there, uh, which is why there's that slight bump. Uh, but our, our medical claims are coming down, uh, and our, our explained, uh, show a little bit of improvement as well. There's total plant cost, uh, from, uh, these are three years. Again, this is from May to April of, uh, of each plan year, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. Uh, and these are our medical funding rates, uh, that, that we currently have. Rojondo has three plans, uh, LaFeria has two plans. What happened is that both districts had the same exact plans, uh, but in, in, in a year, in a given year, uh, LaFeria decided, "We don't want, uh, we want that base plan out and we want the middle plan, the buy-up, to be our base plan." So, so, the, the, the buy-up one and buy-up two is the exact same thing as, uh, as, as the, the, I'm sorry, um, as the base and the buy-up. These two plans are the same as these two, okay? This three-twenty plan is a two thousand deductible, uh, doesn't have an office visit code, okay? It was like the high deductible HSA plan that was installed in, uh, when these rates were established. You don't have that, only, uh, Rojondo has that.
What is our deductible, sir?
One thousand for your base plan and seven fifty for your, your buy-up plan.
Okay.
But keep in mind that, and that's a really good question, is that anything that gets paid by cash, uh, deductible does not apply, uh, the twenty percent coinshows does not apply, out-of-pocket expenses do not apply, just FYI. Uh, we, we, we think that the future is going to be more and more and more cash-based, uh, which will continue to, uh, improve, uh, the plan. We think that, uh, we could get away with just one plan, uh, across the board between both districts, uh, but again, the, the funding mechanisms is, is what's, what's, uh, important to each district.
Mm-huh.
In order for it to, uh, uh, provide affordable care, healthcare to the lots.
So, we're paying three fifty-three per employee, sir?
That's correct. Brownsville is paying over seven hundred dollars per employee. Harbison, I, Mr. Caravazos told me they're paying over five hundred. So, it's, it's, it, the, the reason that this is, the way it is, is because of the strategies that have been implemented on the program, um, so...
Another thing to note is that the, the district still pays a hundred percent of the employee cost.
Right.
There's some districts that aren't paying a hundred percent of the cost.
Exactly.
So, you know, that's great for the employees, that the district can afford to do that.
And that's it. Thank you very much. Any other questions that you may have?
This wasn't actually on this part of the presentation, but I know, one time I asked about like provider lists of like who's in network and stuff, and I think it was like a big Excel worksheet. Is there a way that can be kind of organized?
We're working on it, sir. What we're working on is we wanna make it a web-based list, uh, we're, we're working on it. Uh, I, I, uh, something about IT guys, right? When you hire them, you know? They ask you for a deposit and then, uh, I, I can't find them, uh, but I, I, I'm working on it, I, uh, we're due for one, and it'll be web-based. Just, I, I can't promise you when I'll get it for you, but that is on my, on my to-do list.
One of the things we did also is we have the luxury, every Wednesday, um, you come to our office and sit in the business office, so we've had employees that come and they get a bill or they get a situation, sometimes over the phone, doesn't always work, and so they'll come in and meet and go over that. So, she comes every Wednesday, so we thank you for providing that service to, to assist us, because, um, sometimes she doesn't have as many people, but she's always here, and so that helps as well.
That's nice, thank you.
It's helped quite a bit, and answering any calls from our employees and, and, and since they're calling us, you know, they, they call us, and we truly appreciate that.
Thank you, Esma.
And she's helped, she's, yeah, she's helped, um, as well with the cash pay. Cash pay is great for when you know a plan surgery's going to happen, then she can help you guide the way to do that. And so, we've had, we've had employees that were able to do that.
We've also been able to, uh, we've also been able to, uh, catch a few, uh, uh, that weren't, that, internally to cash pay as well. So, we've had some inpatient services that have occurred, uh, and we were able to get them, uh, to get, uh, the, the, our vendor, Asserta, to call the hospital and, and, and negotiate a cash deal while the member's in the hospital. We've even done it when the member has come out of the hospital, we try to catch, uh, the hospital before they file that claim. And so, one of the, that's one of the advantages that we have with Asserta now repricing the claim, because they can try to intercept those types of claims as well, okay?
Any other questions, Esma, if you're doing that? No, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I, I thank you all very much for having us, and, and I'm happy to come as, as often as you all need for me to come. You, three days from now, you'll probably forget half of the things that I said today, and next week, you won't remember anything. But, uh, but we're here and we will certainly, uh, help remind, uh, you about our plan. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I do have a copy of that presentation, I'll, I'll make a printout and then we'll send it to, we'll maybe...
Thank you. The next information I did is...
If I did workshop.
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Castillo and Ms. Foulis, uh, this is our second budget workshop for the year. Uh, we do plan to have a final budget, uh, hearing in, in late June, June twenty-fifth, I think we're planning to do that, uh, and that's, you know, before the board is out to budget, we are required to have a public hearing. So, we're gonna go over some of this information, uh, some of it is something that we covered the last time, but ask any questions if you...
So, I know, um, one of the things that Mr. Caravazos, if you look on page two, if you look on page two, highlights from the last, we talked about the property value increase. He said that the construction had gone up from about fourteen thousand, um, to forty-seven thousand, just the construction. And so, our property values have gone from six hundred and fifty-eight thousand to seven hundred and forty thousand. We also talked about our enrollment and ADA downward. He's going to give you today the latest, um, ADA numbers, um, and show you what our attendance is this year compared to last year, and that will be something new. And then, our enrollment, of course, you know, were not growing, and pretty much this year to last year, pretty much fifteen students, but almost staying stagnant. And then, reduction of one-time cost, um, we shared that last time, that we had some one-time costs last year with the stadium and so forth scoreboard that we won't have this time. Staffing guidelines reductions, we talked about not, not eliminating any positions, but with the Esther positions no longer being, um, on the, on the, on, as well as, yes, as well as, um, staffing. When people have left, we looked at, we can't, changing those numbers so that we can afford to give that raise that y'all talked about. So, um, that's something else. And then, um...
Start with that.
Oh, no. And then, the increase for the police department, um, a five percent reduction, and then increase in property insurance.
Yeah, I loaded the wrong, number twenty-eight, but it's a little bit too different.
No, okay, so you can add anything, I may have forgotten, you were gonna say, "What did you say?"
You did a great job, ma'am. I think we're done. So, the, the highlights from the last budget workshop, uh, you know, some, so again, I'm gonna go over some of this, uh, that we went in, uh, last, at the last budget workshop. Our property value insurance, it did increase some six hundred and fifty-eight million dollars to an estimated seven hundred and forty million dollars. The enrollment ADA is trending downwards a little bit. Uh, we did have some reductions of one-time costs, uh, we did have some staffing guideline reductions, and we'll go over each one of these items. Increase for the police department, uh, five percent reduction in central operating, uh, budget, and we, and they have a, a slice of increase in our property insurance. Again, this is a, this is a budget recap, you should have this packet as a, the, our packet in front of you. Yeah, this is a budget recap, you know, and this shows, you know, total estimated revenues and estimated appropriations, and again, we have three different columns. Uh, we have the local, uh, fund, and then the food service fund, and the total, uh, general fund, uh, and, and so, the food service fund is a separate fund by itself, and everything that we generate from food service revenues, and it goes to food service expenditures, and we can't move those funds, so it's pretty much self-balancing fund. Our local fund is where, you know, a majority of our dollars are at, our foundation dollars and property tax dollars, uh, and other, other revenues that we have. So, in total estimated revenues, you know, we have about six point one, uh, six point one seven million dollars, about five point three of that is, you know, current property tax collections, another two hundred thousand dollars in delinquent, and about five hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars in, in other local revenues. And, and part of those local revenues is, you know, the majority of that is, is interest income. Because the rates are a little bit higher than usual... interest income. We, you know, because the rates are a little bit higher than usual, we are generating a little bit more interest income than we have in the past. Some gate receipts for, for football games and other sporting activities is there. State revenues, you know, we're looking at, at projecting ADA about twenty-six oh three. And we'll go over that number here a little bit. The total state revenue is based on that projection. It's about twenty-seven point six million dollars. And then other revenues is, other federal revenues about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. A lot of that is from our charge, Medicaid reimbursement, and also a little bit of indirect costs that we get from the federal grants. And we flip over to page number six. This is just a recap of how we, you know, arrived at those revenues. And, and really didn't change much. It changed about seven, eight thousand dollars from the previous budget workshop, but I do want to go over that with you as well. Again, you know, four different columns, you know, our original budget back in twenty, you know, twenty-two, twenty-four, the revised budget that we had, and then the projected revenue and revenues are projected for this year, and then the estimated of twenty-four, twenty-five. If we look at, at the total local revenues, we had originally budgeted in local revenues about seven point three million dollars. We revised that budget to about five point one. And that was again, the, the shift between the state, you know, revenue and the local revenue that we brought a budget amendment to the board. The total didn't change, but it, it just changed it from the column. What we're projecting to have in, in total estimated revenues is about five point four. What we're estimating next year in the local revenues is about six point one. A lot of that is an increase in property taxing of levy because we have a higher property taxable value at the, at the, at the current tax rate. It's going to generate some additional dollars. And state, state revenues, if we look at the state revenues, last year, our budget was based on twenty-six nineteen eighty-eight. You know, we're actually going to be about twenty-six oh three this year. And we're comfortable in projecting twenty-six oh three next year. I think we can attain that amount a little bit more. And we're still need to work on our attendance rate a little bit. But, you know, our enrollment, you know, reduced a little bit, not, not significant, but we feel that we can maintain a twenty-six oh three average daily attendance. And that's where we get the bulk of our funding through the average daily attendance, not, not through enrollment, but through the, to the time that the kids are at, at school. So that generates about, you know, that twenty-six oh three would generate about twenty-seven point six million dollars. And as you can see, you know, this year, we're projecting twenty-seven point seven. So that, that's a little bit of a decrease than the previous year because of the, of the, a little bit less ADA. Federal revenues, again, we budgeted one point six million. And, and this year, we're projecting about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in, in projected revenue realized. And we're going to, you know, budget about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for this stuff coming here. And, you know, as I mentioned at the last, you know, budget workshop, there's a big reduction there because of the charge revenues that, you know, there were some, some changes at the state level. So we had to reduce, you know, those estimated revenues. Again, thirty-four point four million dollars in estimated total revenues. And last year, we had about thirty, thirty-four point six. So it's about a, almost about, about a hundred and seventy thousand dollar reduction in total budget from last year. We've gone to the next page. You know, one of the things that we, that we're working on is our proposed tax rate. Currently, you know, we're, we're, we're looking at the same tax rate. You know, by the time we finish the, the budget and the tax rate calculation, it might be a little bit lower, maybe probably no more than a penny, maybe fractions of a penny. It could be a little bit lower. But, you know, it's not, it's not going to be any higher. So again, this is the proposal that we had in, in, in twenty-two, twenty-three, about ninety-five point eight three cents, you know, per hundred dollars worth of valuation. And we're using that number currently. If it changes a little bit, it's just going to be a change between state and local revenues. So it's not going to affect the overall budget. But it'll be a, it'll be a small change. This is the property values and tax rate over the, over the, in the passing of five years, six years. And just wanted to again point out that it's a growth in taxable value, four hundred and ten million dollars in nineteen twenty to about seven hundred and thirty-four million dollars in, in estimated twenty-four, twenty-five. I did adjust that seven thirty-four. Remember, we had seven hundred and forty million dollars the previous budget workshop. But as we get additional data from the appraisal district, you know, we revised those numbers. So I did adjust that a little bit downward. And I'm going to go through all the calculations, you know, but, you know, based on the ninety-seven point five percent collection rate, and this is local and current, I mean, delinquent and current, the taxes about ninety-seven point five. That would generate about five point five million dollars in local revenues, another one point four million dollars for our debt service. You know, as I pointed out last, you know, budget workshop, our new construction this year, about forty-seven point nine million dollars compared to the previous years that had been hovering about fourteen, fifty million dollars per year. So a significant increase in, in single-family, you know, construction this year as opposed to the previous years. And there's a little recap on the debt service, you know, payments, you know, that we have. Again, we're projecting to, and debt service, and that's how we pay our bonds, about one point seven million dollars in payments. Currently, based on that tax rate, we're projecting to have about one point nine million dollars in, in revenues. So that's a little bit of, of revenues over expenditures, about two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. I think we're fine there. We're, we're covering a little bit for some deficit that we had last year. So we should be fine there, keeping that same tax rate for, for that, for the debt service. And, you know, I'll show this graph again, you know, this time, this is just a comparison of the property tax rate by year from the, you know, over the past, you know, six, seven years. You consider our, our tax rate in nineteen eighteen, nineteen, one twenty-nine point nine, currently at ninety-five point eight three. So it's a reduction of about over thirty cents over, over that timeframe. Our property values have, have increased from about four hundred and ten million dollars all the way up to the seven hundred and thirty-four. So you can see that big, you know, spike in, in taxable values. And there's a breakdown of the current MNO, maintenance operations versus interest and sinking fund in that graph. Any questions on, on that?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So on the enrollment in two thousand and nineteen, it was three thousand two hundred and twenty-nine on the top?
Yes.
Okay. So we have new construction and we have a lot of construction back then?
Yeah, well, yeah, in, in nineteen twenty, yeah, there was only new construction about nine point nine million dollars. So that new construction, you know, we get those numbers from the appraisal district. So, you know, you know, they, they go out and they see all this new construction and then they add it to the tax rule. So, yeah, this year, there's a significant increase in, in new construction. And, and a lot of people are going to say, you know, there's all these homes being built in the area where the kids, well, you know, there's, there's different reasons as to why that enrollment hasn't increased. Some of it is the birth rates, right? Over the years, those birth rates have declined. So no longer you have your, your average family house of four, or five, or six. Now it's like, you know, one kid and one, you know, two kids per, per family. So we know that those birth rates have declined over the years. And, you know, there's also, you know, you know, the, the additional charter schools and, and the open enrollment from the other districts. But, yeah, we closely monitored that and, and we did see that, you know, that there is a lot of, you know, new subdivisions coming up and where, where are the kids? But, you know, they're, they haven't materialized yet.
And a lot of the houses, like the one down the street that I live on, if you go down, most of them are for sale. They built a lot of houses, but there's for sale signs. Probably out of thirty houses, five people are living in them and the rest of them have for sale signs. So some of them haven't been sold yet.
And sometimes, you know, you get some people that live in, in their city, you know, they do want to move out to the, you know, to the outskirts. So, so a lot of that, some of that is movement from people that live in the city to the, to the outside subdivisions. But, yeah, the, the enrollment has been reduced.
And we have seen that, you know, they used to be, they used to be zoned to this school, but now they moved to one of these subdivisions. So now they're zoned to another school. And we have seen some of that.
That's a good question. So, you know, here's this notice of, of a budget of proposed tax rate. And this is last year's. You know, I just wanted to show the board, we, we need to publish this notice, you know, at least ten days before, before the, the public hearing. So we're going to publish this notice in the paper, you know, by, by June fifteenth.
And we'll send you an update for the one that we're going to publish before we publish it.
Yeah, we don't have all the numbers yet, you know, from the appraisal district. So we typically, we start working on that early June. But as soon as we get that, then, yeah, we'll. The next slide here is on, on enrollment and average daily attendance. And, and so this, you know, I did this this morning. And this is the, the twenty-two, twenty-four average daily attendance by six weeks. So, you know, you can see we have six six-week reporting periods. And, you know, the attendance rate for the first six weeks was ninety-three point five nine percent attendance rate. The ADA, refined average daily attendance, about twenty-six oh eight, you know, students that attended the school. And the second six week, you know, the, the attendance rate went down to about ninety-one point seven three. The third six, third six week, ninety-two point five two, and so on and so forth. The fifth six weeks was, was a little bit better, ninety-three point five seven. And then this last six weeks, just in the last week, ninety-two point three percent. And, and we'll go, I have a, a chart there on, on the attendance rates over the years. This other is, is the special populations that we have, like, like T one, T two, T three. Those are the current technology, you know, full-time students that, that are taking courses, you know, and by six weeks. And, you know, it's pretty much, you know, stayed about the same, two hundred and thirty, you know, for the tier two courses. And then a hundred and forty-five for the tier three courses. And, and like, you know, the numbers for the current technology, FTE is actually went up from last year. So we had an increase in, in students taking the current technology courses. And we have the special education population, you know, the bilingual ESL and the early education, you know, allotment and the GT. You know, we do separate those numbers. All those play an important part in the funding format. So as we get those numbers, we're able to project for next year. So we use those, you know, most core numbers to, to do that projection. This is a comparison of the average daily attendance, you know, over, over the years. And again, back in thirteen, fourteen, we're thirty-six thirteen, six thousand six hundred and thirteen students. Currently, you know, about twenty-eight ninety-five. So it, it has, it has decreased, you know, over the years. So as the, you know, our, our average daily attendance from thirty-three oh five to about twenty-six, you know, to twenty-six oh three. And then, and then, you know, the attendance rate, which is aligned, you can see over the years, you know, about ninety-six percent was now the question. That ninety-eight percent, I think that was part of the COVID transition that we had. We could use some virtual attendance at, you know, that particular year. But you can, you can see that the decline after COVID, ninety-one point seven three percent in twenty-one, twenty-two, two, in twenty-two, twenty-three, ninety-two point nine one, about the same this year. You know, we feel that we can, you know, and try to improve that, you know. And, and if we do, that's additional revenues for the district at the same time as the kids are in, in the classroom, you know, learning.
Well, Mr. Goss, I know I asked you earlier, how have we managed to, to operate on our, you know, on our budget?
Budget.
You know, especially since other districts are, you know, kind of looking at their finances and, you know, with our enrollment down, with our attendance down, with monies kind of shifting, you know, federal, state, local, you know, how have we managed to?
So, so it's an excellent question. And so we, so I'll go back to the, to the first slide that was going to go back to the budget recap. As you can see, the total estimated revenues that we have there, that's with a thirty, you know, you know, everything that we just went through is, is, you know, that's thirty-four point four million dollars projected. Now, you see, the question was, so we look at last year's appropriations. You know, we started at thirty-five point three million dollars. You know, that's, that's how much we had, you know, the board approved the budget. From that, you know, we, we're trying to, what can we do to be able to, to do the things that we want to do as far as salary increase? So, so it's about cost cutting. You know, basically, the revenues appropriations stay the same, the, the estimated revenues. But we're trying to, you know, pass the salary increase by trying to reduce some costs. And so we're, we're going to go over that, you know, here. So last year in our budget, we had, we had one-time items of seven hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And that was, you know, the scoreboard that we had, you know, the board had approved to purchase that. So we ended up, you know, spending that. We had one-time costs of vehicles and furniture of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's included in that thirty-five point three million dollars. So we're backing that out, you know. And so that resets a little bit of money, right? Besides that, you know, we're also looking at, you know, staffing adjustments and we'll go over the, those here in a little bit. But there's a reduction of about six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. So one of the, one of the things that Ms. Thodas, you know, we had a conversation about, okay, what can we do to try to, 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 to better our pay, especially for our teachers, based on where we are with, you know, comparison with the other districts? So, you know, and, and we don't have any more money. It's about trying to recuperate some of those costs. So in, in here, in, in the staffing guidelines, and let me just go to that picture, which is, this page, page sixteen, on your handout, you know, we're, we're able to, you know, to reduce some staffing, you know, for this year. And that translates to some dollars, you know, that, you know, that, that we can save. So for, and, and here, on the adjustments here, we have a net reduction of thirteen locally funded staff, you know, some, most of those are teachers. And then, you know, that translates to about seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in, in savings, right? Because, you know, if we have less kids, you know, less students, you know, we can do with less staff, right? So, so we're trying, trying to, to get back to, you know, to, to a good number as far as the teacher to, you know, student to, to, to teacher ratio. So, so there's a savings, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars there. We also added, you know, some new, you know, you know, costs there. The TA coordinator, the teacher incentive alumni coordinator, that is actually new to this year's budget, it's about eighty-five thousand dollar cost for that individual. So, you know, we have to, you know, net that amount from, from, from savings. So the total savings there is six, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars in, in those costs. We also, because of the loss of the, I mean, the ESR funds, you know, these were ESR-funded positions. And all the employees knew that they were ESR-funded positions, that, you know, we weren't going to renew this year. So there's just, not a savings, but a reduction in costs of six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Because we don't have those revenues anymore, so we're not going to, you know, we're not going to hire that person to teach us. We have a couple of auxiliary staff, you know, in the media center and the custodian academy, you know, some savings there too, that we're going to, you know, do without. So about sixty-two thousand dollars in savings there. The net local savings, six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars in federal, and then the federal funding, sixteen, six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. So this, that's, you know, total reduction in staffing of about one point three million dollars. So, so as we, you know, as, as we posture ourselves to be able to provide a good salary increase, we understand that we have to deal with less costs because there's no, no additional new money for the state currently. Eventually, I'm sure you're going to.
Mr. Kalas, I have a question for Mrs. Thodas. And I, I definitely understand you definitely do want to give our teachers a raise. And of course, I know we're doing decisions or not hiring. But how will that be to our student-teacher ratio?
So if, one of the things, I'm going to use Green as an example. Green had two conference periods. And so over the time, we didn't see where two conference periods really made a big, so we eliminated one of those conference periods. So when you have four, forty-something, fifty teachers that give you another section, that's fifty sections you have now. And so say I had eight English teachers. Well, now, out of eight, each of them gave me another section. That's like getting another teacher. I was able to eliminate or absorb two positions because some of their ratios was one to thirteen, one to fourteen. So nobody is going to have the state ratio. We, we stay with the TA state ratio. So up to fourth grade is one to twenty-two, fifth grade on up, it's one to twenty-four. We will not have, at Green sometimes, and at high school, you'll have a class maybe that has twenty-six, and then you'll have a class that has thirteen. It just happens sometime in the scheduling. For the most part, though, your average is going to be way below. I believe Dominguez now is about one to twenty, one to twenty-one, somewhere in there. That's the ratio. And, and Green the same with absorbing all of the positions. So we've, we still feel comfortable being able to do that because of the numbers that we have lost. This past year, we had at our elementaries, three hundred and something students, where at one time at the campuses, we had five hundred. At Green, one time, we had five hundred and fifty kids. And this year, we had in the four hundreds. And so, but we still have the same number of staff. So.
Okay. Great.
So, so this next slide, the graph here, I'm kind of, you know, you know, in response to your question, it has, you know, the, the, you know, the red line is the teacher-student to pupil ratio. So, so in two thousand and thirteen, fourteen, we're at fifteen point one four, teach, students to teacher. And, you know, and about six point five six, you know, overall staff to teacher. Students to. Students to staff, sorry. I always get those confused, but, so, and that's in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. In two, in twenty-three, twenty-four, that ratio went down to thirteen point eight six students per every teacher. So we have less students per every teacher. So, if, if you look at the total number of teachers that we had in twenty thirteen, fourteen, it's not here, but if you have the number, it was, we had about two hundred and thirty-eight teachers at that ratio, you know, fifteen, you know, fourteen. If we apply that same ratio to this year, the fifteen point one four, that will translate to about a hundred ninety-one teachers. So it's about a little over forty less teachers, to have that same ratio that we had in thirteen, fourteen. So I think even with the reduction of, of staff, we're still going to be a little bit, you know, better ratioed this year than, than it was back in thirteen, fourteen. Do you follow that?
Yes.
Again, one of the reasons that we're trying to take up the cost, the cost is to try to, you know, try to, you know, be more competitive, especially with our teachers. Our beginning-year teacher, they're forty-eight thousand dollars, you can see the market group of fifty-two, six. So we're about ninety-one percent in the market, about twelve thousand six hundred less than the market. And, and this includes all, you know, reaching one districts and, and, and certainly, you know, the higher districts, you do pay a little bit better than the smaller ones. But if you can look at some of the smaller districts there, you know, we're still a little bit below then.
So we had a teacher that we're interviewing and contacted us today, and they asked us a couple of questions. The first is what our pay was, because they know what other districts have. But another thing that the teacher asked today is, well, do you participate in TIA? Because if I go to this district over here, I have a chance of getting bonus money from the state. But if I go to LaFaria, right now, we don't have a teacher incentive allotment, so they can't get that fund, those funds. So that's why I said that we have got to apply and, and do that application process by April, because we're already one step behind all the other schools by not being a part of that. And so teachers know now, not only are they asking you, how much is your base pay, do you give a stipend? But they're also asking you, are you a part of TIA? And so that's why we are so, and we've heard it from the commissioner, that he is pushing towards putting more money in the teacher incentive allotment, it's kind of like the business thing, you will get more money when you show results, type of thing, so.
Plus, we pay for their health insurance.
Right.
So again, I, I will just slide that the last workshop. So if we were to, I updated this a little bit, you know, if, you know, the board was, was to approve a twenty-five hundred dollar increase for teachers, this is what the new, new hiring scale would be. You can see the twenty-three, twenty-four hiring scale, and then the twenty-four, twenty-five hiring scale. So if the serial te, teacher, you know, from forty-eight thousand to fifty thousand five hundred, so what does that do to the one-year teacher? Because we were at forty-eight thousand dollars last year, so with the twenty-five hundred dollars, there may be a fifty thousand five hundred. Well, we need to make an adjustment for that particular step, so that, so like that, they're not at the same pay as a serial year teacher, so. And so we would make an additional adjustment of a hundred and fifty dollars there. And that's, the one-year teacher will be fifty thousand six fifty, compared to the fifty thousand five hundred for the beginning-year teacher.
So every teacher across the board would get the twenty-five hundred. It would not just be new teachers.
So that was the only step that required an adjustment, sir?
Yes, yes, because it's pretty much, you know, diagonally, you know, diagonally, that increase, and that would be the, you know, one step that did require an adjustment. Total cost for that is about five hundred and ten thousand dollars. So about twenty-five hundred dollars times two hundred, you know, five hundred. The next slide here is, also updated this, you know, the preliminary new pay structure for everybody else, right? Assuming that we do a three percent adjustment to the scale, we didn't do an adjustment last year, so we feel a three percent adjustment, just to, to be, to stay more in the market, you know, it's appropriate. And then the three percent increase to staff, you know, that would be their day, their average daily in, increase, depending on the, on the pay grade that they're at. Three percent for professionals and three and a half percent for the hourly staff. In total, you know, that would be about three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars in, in new, new cost, you know, in salary increase. And we know that, you know, about ninety percent of that is paid by, by federal grants, a lot of food service people, and then the people that are charged to federal grants. So that, that is paid by the bank, so back that out, and the total local increase is about three hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars. Yet the teacher pay to that gives us a total of eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred and forty dollars. And that would be the total cost of any, of the increase that the board approves, you know, the budget, that will be incorporated into, into the, into the budget for next year.
And we're trying to get a complete, what am I saying?
Compensation?
Yes.
Oh, the compensation.
Compensation plan, compensation plan, so that we can bring to the board June tenth. Because we really want our staff to know, before the end of June, this is what the board, you know, was able to approve for any kind of raise, and not wait till later. So Mr. Gavasus is working on that, to see if we can have that ready by June tenth.
So, you know, a lot of, some, but most of the districts, you know, had a salary increase last year, Lafada did not.
Right.
And, and I don't think a lot of districts are going to have a salary increase this year, because, you know, you know, working with that budget and also the enrollment has declined. Some might, you know, because they do, they do want to provide some type of cost-effective, you know, adjustment to staff. So some might have, you know, might propose an increase. And, and I can tell you that they're probably going to reduce some costs similar to be able to balance your budget.
And that was, that was one of the thoughts, you know, I had is, you know, we're trying to do twenty-five to catch up, but if they're going to go up, then it's like, we're just stay behind, stay behind, you know, so, yeah, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah, and, yeah, I don't think that they'll do twenty-five, I think they, they might do maybe a thousand. You know, if they give a salary increase last year, let's say a thousand and twelve hundred, they might do, you know, something just, just to have a, a, a cost-effective adjustment to staff, but.
And not all of them are changing, they're, they might give a thousand dollar, but they're not all changing their, their, their pay grades, is that correct?
It, it could be a one-time stipend, yeah, but they do.
So some of them are doing the, you know, might be doing the, the stipend instead of, you know, from what we're doing. And again, we've talked about this before, our goal is to continue to look at this, to have another step, even if the, you know, state does come up with money, so that we can close that gap. You know, so with, you know, applying for the TIA, and also trying to close that gap with another year, by doing some, some additional work, we're hoping to, in the next couple of years, get, get where we need to be.
I have a question. On slide fourteen, the comparison of the ADA, what is the, the cost, the, the amount for ninety-six point two percent in attendance?
You said every percentage is about how much money?
Like a number amount, like I want to see the, like, you know, how much money from ninety-six point two in two thousand seventeen, right before COVID, to this year, ninety-two point ninety, what's the amount of money that, that is in, in attendance, not enrollment, just attendance?
The total amount, you know, in, in, in foundation dollars due to average daily attendance, it's about this, it's the twenty, twenty-six million dollars. You know, that's the total dollars that we get from the state, based on the average daily attendance.
How much do we lose, how much do we lose for every percentage we're down?
So, so for every student, we get six hundred, six thousand one hundred and six dollars, you know, for the basic allotment. So one percent of, you know, of three thousand is, is thirty, right? So, you know, so six thousand times thirty is a hundred, what, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So about two hundred thousand dollars for one percent.
So if you're down four percent, that's eight hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, so, so it's a significant amount, I mean, that, you know, we're losing, you know, because, you know, the, the students aren't coming to school. There's been a lot of talk at the state level about, you know, do, do we funding at the enrollment for, enrollment versus average daily attendance? They've talked about that for years, and it never materializes, you know. So it, you know, the state pays and based on the average daily attendance, you know, when the kids are in school.
Well, I'm just saying, you know, our enrollment is not increasing drastically, even though with the new construction. So, you know, our focus should be in attendance, make sure our attendance are, is up there.
Hundred, hundred percent correct, yeah, yeah, and that will be the key, because, you know, if, if we're at ninety-six percent, you know, that should be the goal, right? Get to that ninety-six percent, and that's about, you know, you know, three and a half, you know, four percent. So that's, yeah, eight hundred thousand dollars plus in, in potential revenues.
So something that we do, when we brought the calendar to you, is we have to look at certain things that we know, if we do this, we have very low attendance. If we do this, and sometimes, well, we used to have Thanksgiving Monday and Tuesday, and then they were off Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, nobody came Monday, Tuesday, it was horrible. So a lot of schools, again, started doing things because attendance was a factor. So, again, that's, you know, when we're pushing for that attendance, and we, you know, on the board report, I'll send you attendance, you can kind of estimate, hey, every percentage is that much.
So, yeah, good question. So we go back to the, you know, page number four in the budget recap, some additional savings that, that we, you know, are trying to, trying to recuperate. You know, we, we are planning to charge our migrant director half of the salary to the federal grant migrant, about forty thousand dollars. Health insurance, you know, we talked about, you know, right now, currently, we're paying for every employee, we're paying the premium for the health insurance, even though they're not participating in the, in the health plan. So we felt that, you know, that's really not an actual cost for the health plan, that, you know, we need to recoup, you know, those dollars back. And if the premiums rise, you know, next year or the following year, because, because, you know, we're not contributing for these people that are in the plan, then, then it's a better reflection of how the plan is doing, right? So, you know, there's savings there, excuse me, about a hundred and sixty, about sixty-three thousand dollars. Increase in property insurance, we talked about that, about a hundred and fifty, sixty thousand dollars. Decrease in audit fees, you know, last year, we budgeted a hundred and ten thousand dollars for audit fees. The, you know, auditors, you know, you know, estimated about fifty, fifty-five thousand dollars for this year, which is a better number to, for district our size. You know, some additional new costs for the police force, about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So we're planning to do there, which is not equated here, is to some additional funds that we hopefully will get from the state to, to cover some of those costs, is to the, the safe cycle to, that, that we have a five-four, it's about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, but we can use that for, for, for police, you know, for the police force. So, you know, if we get that, then we're going to, you know, use some of those dollars to offset some of this, some of the police force costs. And then five percent reduction to central office staff. We felt that, you know, if, if we try to streamline, streamline our budget, you know, we could, you know, have some savings there. So all the principals and the directors, you know, they came in with a, you know, a ninety-five percent of their budget from last year, so we realized some savings there. And then this other item that we put there, staff equity, market adjustment, about fifteen thousand dollars for local fund, and about six thousand five hundred for food service. And those are some, some personnel that, that we feel need some adjustments to be paying, you know, either because of an equity adjustment that hasn't been adjusted, or to get them better to market. Still working on the, on the final number there, but that will be a, a little bit of an impact to the budget, because there will be some improvements that, that the salary is, like, so.
Mr. Gavasus, I know it depends on the schools in the world regarding the budget they get, so how much are we talking regarding the five percent, like, dollars on somebody else? See what I'm saying?
Like at a campus, how much is five percent?
I know it varies with campus to campus.
So, about twenty thousand dollars, I don't know, I don't remember, but, but, yeah. It, you know, at the elementary, it was about twenty, twenty-two thousand dollars per campus. And we felt that their budget that they had, you know, there was, was adequate enough, so, you know, trying to reduce our budget some, some, a little bit. We still feel that, you know, that, you know, that budget that they're going to have is going to be adequate enough for, for next year.
For next year.
And then we have the directors, you know, that, that, you know, that also were able to reduce, you know, some of their budgets. So across the board, we, you know, try to recoup some of those dollars.
No, I understand that, I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
How much are we talking about?
Yeah, it wasn't a significant amount, I mean, as far as, you know, that we. So, so the total estimated profit is about thirty-three point five, and again, gives us a surplus of eight hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars. The increase for the salary, about eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. So estimated surplus right now, about eleven thousand dollars in local and about, you know, food service, a little bit, about six hundred and eighty-three, and we'll fix that. We'll make it, we'll, we'll get a balanced budget then for the board to approve. So that's the budget recap, but do you want to go, any questions to this, or do you want to go over?
And one of the things we talked, when we went out to the campuses, and I met with the campuses and, and the department heads, there is absolutely no way, without doing these type of cuts, would we be able to give any type of increase in salary? Because there is no new, new monies. And in fact, if you look at our revenue from last year to this year, as Mr. Gavasus said, we're about two hundred thousand less. And then we also got, he's going to explain our federal dollars as well in just a minute, so. But we did talk to the staff and say, as we absorb, you're going to see this in salaries. It's not being absorbed to put it on balance, it's not being absorbed to, to buy something, it's being absorbed to give back to you, you know, in the salary increase.
So, go forward to page twenty-two. This is the financial, and I didn't change this from the last, you know, workshop. We're still projecting about thirty-three point six million dollars in revenues, about thirty-three point six dollars in expenditures, so pretty much have a break-even here, of, you know, thirty-five thousand, you know, net, you know, revenue over expenditures. And then, yes, this increases our front balance a little bit, from ten point, from, sorry, from nine point five zero four to nine point five, nine million four, five hundred and forty thousand dollars. So a little bit of a, of an increase there. Food service, again, is a separate, separate fund, and you can see them as well. This is a, a historical graph of our expenditures and front balances. So as we, as we look at, working to make sure the numbers, we want to make sure that we have, that we're adequately financially stable. And as of twenty-three, twenty-four, you know, we, we have about, you know, thirty-three, you know, million dollars in, in expenditures, estimated expenditures, about ten point three million dollars in our reserves, so that gives us about a hundred and fourteen days of operating, you know, days. And, and, and the state likes to keep it at about ninety, you know, if you get ninety, that's pretty good. I mean, even a little bit less than ninety, still, still good. We want to, you know, at least, you know, have the three months at ninety. When you start getting to like sixty days of reserves, then, you know, yeah, you, you need to make sure that we don't spend any more in reserves. But anything above ninety, this, this, that was pretty good.
And we talked about different, you know, different expenditures we may have in the future, that we may have to use some of that, and just depending, and we're still looking at some of that, and seeing what we can buy a couple more years with, with that having to get in.
So you could use, let's say, a million dollars and still stay above the ninety?
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I mean, you, you can, I mean, and if there's some needs, you know, that the district has, it's something that, you know, we certainly will bring to the board, you know, for their approval. And, and we still will feel comfortable that our front balances and the net, and.
Of course, it'd have to be a one-time expenditure, not a recurrent.
Exactly, one-time, one-time cost, yeah, you always want to be a one-time cost in your shift. You don't want to fund a salary increase, because then that. These are preliminary entitlements, you know, for the federal funds. And we, we get these different funds, you know, these are formula-driven funds, and, and we get every year. So you can see the reductions, entitled one, you know, in twenty, you know, twenty-three, twenty-four, were one point two nine. This year, the preliminary is one point one, so there's a, there's a, a, a reduction of about a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars. You can see, you know, down the road, you know, small reductions, IDF formula, which is special education, you know, federal grant, was down forty-six thousand dollars. In total, about two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar reduction in, in staffing. And so we do a lot of funding for, you know, for Paris, you know, we have about, most of our Taiwan dollars goes to fund for Paris, and we need to kind of look at that, and see what we need to do to try to, you know, try to work within these new, new numbers.
Is there a reason why with the decrease, any specific reason?
You know, it, it, there, there's some districts that did receive a little bit more money, and, and I think it's, you know, it's based on the population of the community, you know, the enrollment, you know, the low economic percentage. So Lafada and Harmony kind of mirror themselves in, in, in that regards. I can tell Harmony's also got a reduction in the title one dollars. I can tell you, Westup, we got an increase in title one dollars. And, and so, so it, it, it's, it changes based on the economics of that community. But, you know.
And as we talked with the, when we met with the facility, planning the long-range committee, you know, they asked, well, has it helped having all these subdivisions? And so it hasn't helped in the fact that if we, you know, if we ever needed to do I F. do IFA, we have to pay a bigger percentage. And then also, when they look at your property value, and it goes up, we lose some money here, so, it's just kind of like this.
I have a question. Maybe, I don't understand the math. Let's say we got a hundred more in these students next year. I mean, hopefully, we do. But our attendance is still ninety-two. How much more money will that generate or will it?
So, so, it's just a, you know, simple math, if you take a hundred, and that is, it doesn't work exactly like that.
Right, right, right.
Hundred times ninety-two percent is ninety-two. So, we get five out of ninety-two students, right? So, ninety-two times a six, six thousand, you know, one hundred dollars gives you the estimated revenue, uh, knowing that it is, is, and that's not exactly how it works, but, but in general, you know, more or less that's what it will be.
To get a ballpark figure.
Yeah.
Yeah, just wondered if, you know, if it'll be, you know, a big increase, but.
Even if we did, yeah, even if we didn't increase a single student, but we got the attendance, uh, each percentage is two hundred thousand.
It's just a little disappointing, because I know the principals worked very hard, uh, you know, to increase their attendance. I mean, they've done things that I didn't think about when I was a principal at all, and yet, they're not seeing the results of those efforts, so.
Yeah, it's, it's strange, you know, you know, to do an analysis of other districts in other areas of the state, where they're are at with that attendance rate. You know, here, you know, it's, you know, hovering ninety-two, ninety-three percent. And for some districts upstate, they're like ninety-sixty, and they went back to where they were before COVID.
All right.
Uh, but it'll be interesting to kind of see, you know, how, you know, what, you know, how those districts are, are, are there.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, you know, you know, would we, are we ever going to get back to the pre-COVID attendance rate?
That's a question.
Yeah, yeah, I hope, hope so, but that's a question to be asked, why, why haven't we, why aren't we there yet?
Right, exactly.
I have a question, I don't know, this may be, maybe I don't understand what Scott Stio said, but say the voucher thing passes, where will they take the money from? They said they would take money from the public school system. Where would they take that money from?
So, so the way that that would work is they would give less money to the schools.
Oh, give them less.
They have a voucher program that they're going to fund, right?
Right.
So, instead of, you know, public education, you know, school districts and charters getting this much money, uh, now you're going to have another, in the public syst- in the school system, the voucher program, that's going to take a little bit of, of, of that pie. So, it's not that they're going to be getting less, I mean, they're going to be getting, they're not going to be getting as much because of the voucher program. And with all costs increased, you know, with it, you know, with the years, yeah, the need is, is still there for the additional funds.
Just to do kind of like a ballpark figure, like you said, a hundred kids could maybe, and you kept the same attendance, ninety-two, will get you maybe five hundred thousand dollars. But the current kids we had, you know, increased it two percent on attendance, and there's your five hundred thousand dollars.
Exactly, so, yeah, it's not, yeah, definitely with math, that's what I asked.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good question on, on the voucher program, and, and we don't know where that's going to be at.
Right.
At the state level, and, uh, and, and, yeah, you know, if it does go through, then there's going to be less money to go around, because of, of the new book.
Right.
Right.
So, uh, any questions on the budget? So, so these are the next steps, right? You know, so, in June tenth, you know, we have our regular board meeting, and we're going to be, bring forward the final salary increase proposals, uh, along with a staff compensation plan, you know, packet. So, everything's going to be in there for compensation, to include stipends, athletic stipends, what we pay for the hourly staff, and, uh, anything related to, to payroll will be part of that compensation plan. Uh, by June fifteen, twenty twenty-four, we have to post that notice of the, the public hearing. And then, on, on June twenty-fifth, which I think it's on a Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yeah, we'll hold a public hearing, and it'll be a special, uh, board meeting to, for the board to adopt the budget, and bring forward any, any potential budget amendments that we might have for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And then in August, September, you know, that's when the, the board will approve that tax rate. So, between June, July, you know, we, we finalize the tax rate, TIA has some certain requirements because of the compression of the tax rate over the years, uh, that we have to, you know, go into that, you know, worksheet, and that will determine the, the compression for our maintenance and operation tax rate. I think it's going to go down, maybe less than that, I think, you know, but it, it could.
But it will not go up, you said, right?
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it's not going to go up. The board, in order for it to go up, the board will have to do a TIRE, you know, it may have to be more work, you know, and, uh, that's pretty much it on the budget workshop. Any questions? So, so for the public hearing, we'll, we'll have a little bit different type of report. We'll, we'll have a report of, uh, of, you know, all the different allotments that we get from the state, you know, like your current technology, your GT, your special education, uh, and all, all the different revenues that we get, and then kind of, uh, show the board how we're spending those dollars as well, part of the package. So, we'll put a, a budget packet, where the board can include all of that.
Excellent, sir.
Thanks.
Any more questions?
Show my calendar here.
Yeah, you, you can call me.
And when we send out that compensation plan and, and the budget, um, we'll send it out a plenty of times, so if you want to meet prior, we'll have our meeting prior. For those that like to meet, and, and you can ask those specifics as well. Anybody that wants to meet that has questions, then, and hopefully by the actual day of meeting, we can answer all your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Galavasos, excellent report.
Yes, sir.
Uh, there are three items on the consent agenda, the law cell, the strong foundations, planning grant technical assistance to region one, memorandum of understanding concerning communication and coordination between LaFeria, RISD Police Department and City of LaFeria Police Department, and give to the district for specific purpose as per CDC local. Do I have a motion to approve all items listed on the consent agenda?
So.
I have a motion by, uh, Mr. Bionis, do I have a second?
I second.
Oh, okay, I think I saw Mrs. Montalvo.
Oh, that's, she's fine, that's good.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the items listed on the consent agenda. All those in favor, raise your hand or say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say aye. Motion carry, five zero. It is now seven thirty-seven P.
Six.
Oh, six? I don't know how to count, so, six zero, man. Uh, it is now seven thirty-seven PM, and we are moving into closed meeting. First one to Texas Government Code Chapter five five one. It is now eight eleven PM, and we are now reconvening to open session. Let the record show that the superintendent approved the resignation and retirement as presented by administration, and closed session. Thomas James de la Cerda, Rocío Urbina, Araceli Fuerte, and Lydia Brown. Any other motions?
Yes, Madam President, I move that we offer a one-year probationary contract pending completion of required documentation to Carlos Cuellar.